I could have your attention, as we have been doing last several months before we began our board meeting, would like to have a word of prayer tonight. We've asked Seth Carter, pastor of First Baptist Church in Paintsville, to visit with us and lead us in a word of prayer before we begin.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your abundant mercy. We thank you for your grace that you poured out on us because of what your son, Jesus Christ, has done for us. And Father, I just come before you now with a thankful heart. I'm thankful, as I get to stand here in this room full of educators and full of people who, Lord, are pouring into the lives of our next generations. And, Lord, I just thank you for the work that they do. I thank you for our Johnson County Public School System. And I pray, Lord, as we pray often, that you would bless the work of their hands, Lord. That you would bless all of their efforts to instruct these children as they grow through grade after grade after grade, Lord. I pray for each and every child and student that walks through the doors of these public schools, Lord. Would you just help them to study hard? Would you help them to learn? Would you help them to apply themselves in everything they do so that they may better themselves as they continue to grow? Lord, would you bless their parents, their families, their guardians, those who care for them, Lord? We know that there are so many hurting families in our county. Lord, would you provide as only you can? And, Lord, for all of the teachers and faculty and administrators, Lord, I just pray, as a new school year has now begun, that you would give them the strength they need to do the job you've called them to do. Lord, help them to look to you, to rely upon you, and to trust in you in everything. Lord, we thank you that your word promises us that when we look to you, you uphold us with your righteous right hand. And we thank you that you make a way for us when sometimes, Lord, there just seems to be no way. Lord, I pray that you bless this meeting tonight. I thank you for the chance to be here. Lord, thank you for your abundant goodness towards us. We pray it all in Christ's name. Amen.
Seth, I know you have had a meeting, so we thank you for being here to start the meeting. We appreciate you.
We call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is pledge.
As we always do, we have a couple of students to lead us in the pledge tonight. Tonight, we have sister duos, Peyton Duncan and Cameron Duncan, lead us in the pledge. So girls, please come forward and please stand as they lead us in the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, students, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, if we have the mission statement.
Ms. Patrick, would you please lead us in the mission, vision, and core values?
The mission statement of our school system is the ultimate educational experience for every child, every day. And our vision is an innovative school district focused on learning without boundaries, with our core values being integrity, leadership, commitment, and service.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick.
Item three, student recognition.
We have one special student tonight to be recognized. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crum and let him introduce her.
Well, we just got to meet her second up, but Peyton Duncan. If Peyton didn't stand up, I'd like to recognize Peyton. She is actually getting recognized for multiple things. In our, I guess, was it our June meeting, maybe, June or July meeting, when we did our recognition of our academic team, Peyton didn't get to be here because she was at Governor's School for the Arts, which is also why we're recognizing her tonight. So Peyton had the honor of being selected as our only Governor's School for the Arts student. She was at the Center of College. And, but also, before that, which deserves extreme recognition, she was named the best scenario writer in the entire world at the International Future Problem Solving Competition this year. So I think she deserved a huge. And I can tell you this, she's one of the most talented individuals I've ever met. I mean, her artwork and the things she's done are just amazing.
Congratulations.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Thank you all.
At this time, each meeting, we also honor two Johnson County employees who have been determined to go above and beyond and earned the Golden Eagle Award. The Golden Eagle Award is a state giveaway each month at each board meeting to one classified employee, one certified employee who's been nominated and who do extra things for the students and Johnson County schools. The eagle is very special to me, as it is created by the students at Johnson Central High School, and it's also painted by the art department at Johnson Central High School. And it's all paid for through casual jewelry, as they donate those each month, and the base. So I'm going to announce both of our winners for the month. First, for the classified employee. This nominee goes above and beyond in time, money, sweat, and everything else to ensure the students in her school have everything they need. She often puts herself and her family at the end of her list, making sure that her students' needs are met first. This person always jumps in and helps in all programs, activities, or situations, and she's a big believer in community partnerships. This person is a team player who works long hours daily and often works weekends to complete any and all tasks. Because of all her efforts and the fact that she puts her heart and soul into every child, every single day, this month's Classified Golden Eagle Award is from Central Elementary. The Family Resource Center Director has put me into. Look behind you.
That's your family. You're a good guy.
I don't want to cry on the field.
Come on up, guys.
Hey, I really appreciate it. I'm, yeah, some haste, but. Y'all didn't even say anything. Why are you thinking of going to the advisory council meeting?
All we know is your husband's mad at you.
Karen, did you say I cried on the phone?
All right, I am not crying.
Now for the certified person. This teacher has been recognized for many years of outstanding service and dedication. Education has always been of the utmost importance throughout her career. She has pursued her career not only as a classroom teacher with National Board and Leadership certifications, but also served many years in the medical profession. Her value for education extends not only to her own child, who is a first-year teacher in Johnson County Schools, but also those she teaches on a daily basis. She sets high expectations for all of her students. She goes above and beyond to help her students meet their goals, including working with students during her free time and after school. Additionally, this person serves as a mathematical leader of her school and has served on state mathematics committees. She has been an exceptional model for many student teachers and continues to mentor new teachers. She has worked with academic teams of various capacities, from the head coach, studying with students, and volunteering to moderate meets. This person is a very generous and giving person. She celebrates successes with students, gives birthday gifts, and honors graduation invitations. She is creative and designs many motivational school posters for her school. This person is noted for her perseverance and integrity, for the reasons described above and many more. We are honored to present this month's Golden Eagle Certified Award to Highland Elementary fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Karen Fife. Look, I know what I'm going to say is don't be mad at Jared. I made him laugh.
I know.
I got it. All right, thank you.
No, I'm not a little lack at the moment.
Now, Ms. Fife and Ms. Patrick, will you all give a hand to the board members?
Okay.
Congratulations. Thanks to both of you for your service.
Next on the agenda, I'd like to approve the amendment from July 23, 2018, regular meeting in bills and payroll to August 23, 2018. Is there a motion to do so?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have renovation report. Mr. Adams.
I have Trevor Collins with me tonight from CMTA, and he's going to give you an update of where we're at with our performance contract at this time.
So as I mentioned last time, we're considering substantially completing with the projects, the guarantees in effect. We just have a short list of controls items that we're working on addressing right now. Once that's done, we'll be entirely complete. Update on the savings, we're now $45,000 in excess of the first boning due to the minutes.
Thank you. Next, we have an approval to be made. Mr. Adams.
We do ask that you go ahead and approve this payment. This will be the, this will be the last payment until completion of the project, and we'll hold that money until the project has been completed at that time. So, look, we do ask for approval for this pay, this payment here.
Is there a motion? Motion's made, second?
Second.
Motion's made, the second. Any discussion? There'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next item, old business. Mr. Adams.
This will be the second reading on the action and excuse policy. If you don't have any questions, we do ask that you approve this policy as written.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adams. New business. Mr. Crum.
Hello. Well, this is our turn for Johnson Central to introduce our working action plan. It's kind of a work in progress from last year. Of course, we haven't gotten all of our assessment data yet. Not that that will really matter, because then they keep rewriting it as it goes. So it's from one week to the next, you don't know what you're being judged on. So hopefully, here in the next year, we'll get to that point that we actually know what's happening. Really, what our focus has been at the high school, honestly, because of all the instability and because that we think students should be first and foremost, is our concern is just trying to make sure our students are leaving school with the skills that they need to go on and trying to offer as many advanced courses, be it college dual credit, AP classes, career pathway, career major classes, from, you know, everything that we offer, from engineering to biomedical science to nursing, accounting, carpentry, agriculture mechanics, culinary, you name it. And we feel like that at this point, as a matter of fact, only Graves County in far western Kentucky and us had nearly an equivalent number of pathways. There's no school in Louisville, there's no school in Lexington. No one offers the depth and level of courses that we offer our students. And I think that's maybe one of the best-kept secrets in all of eastern Kentucky, is the type of education that you can get. And it's evidenced by the performance of our students when they go to compete. I mean, I'll put our top 20% of our students up against the top 20% of any student in the whole nation or world, as far as that's concerned. So that's been our trajectory, is just to focus on those things and then kind of not, we're not putting our focus on a test or a test score, it's more about the individual student. So in looking at needs assessment, though, you know, we obviously look at the transition readiness, which is both career and college, like our student-parent surveys. We look at things like the TEL survey. We tried to do some more Google forms, try to get feedback from staff to try to find out things we can do to improve. And one of the things that we really worked on last year that we started, and we're getting ready to try to refine and make it a little better this year, is a leadership program for our students, where once a week, we're trying to do like a leadership lesson to try to help them develop skills that really don't fall anywhere into their career or their core classes. You know, things that you kind of always wished you'd do, but you didn't learn till you were 30 years old. We're trying to gather all those things and try to produce lessons that can help our kids progress. So that's one of the things there is that. And also, staff, this summer, we started work in the district, did a wonderful training this summer for all the administrators on the seven habits, highly effective people. So we decided the high school to take that training to our staff and to try to grow their leadership skills as well. We also did a DISC assessment, so that they could try to get deeper into their own personality assessment, so they could figure out how to make the most of their skills and their talents. And other things we found is we're trying to get into some more targeted work experience opportunities. We've always had a pretty strong work experience program at the high school, but now we're trying to get into some more targeted areas, like engineering, for instance, where places students specifically in areas where they can try to develop those skills. And we already have it for the medical program. We've had carpentry, agriculture, and business. And also IT. And we're still always looking at ways to continue advancing our academic and career learning experiences. But we know that there's still a lot left out that we want to do. We're still trying to, we have agreements currently with U-PAC, with Morehead, and with Big Sandy Community Technical College for dual credit, but we're looking to try to expand that. We started a little bit with E-K-U last year, and we're trying to look at some ways we can grow. The more we can offer, we figure the better for our students. Celebrations, there was too many to list all of them, so I tried to just group it together. We kind of looked at three areas, athletics, of course, you know, the things people know about. Obviously, it's football, state runner-up, you know, our girls' basketball regional champs. Our boys' basketball team accomplished something last year that I don't think a lot of people really realize, but we've been in the regional championship game. And Coach McKenzie's tenure, in 11 years, we've been in the regional championship game eight of 11 years. And that is the most of any school in the history of the 15th region, all the way back through all the great high school schools from the 50s and Wayland and everything. So we accomplished some pretty amazing things that we've had a chance to do. And I think we've been in, I guess, seven consecutive regional championship games. So we're pretty neat. Wrestling, we set a record this year, 10 consecutive regional championships, which is, you know, just amazing. And we've also had several qualifiers in individual areas. Of course, our academics, we've had a chance to recognize those people here. But we've had national success in quick recall, and of course, our international success. And our student organizations, we really have done well competing in Hostess Skills USA, FFA, SCCLA, and try to make sure all of our students have those opportunities to compete as well. And looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, obviously, as noted here, our strengths, our pathways that we offer, the fact that we do offer more advanced placement opportunities in college credit opportunities than other schools across the state. And the new 21st Century Grant, we're really excited about that. Miss Yorke's really come over and worked really hard on helping us get this off the ground. And that's going to help provide some needed help to maybe at-risk students and students that may not have good transportation and normally can stay after school for things. You know, opportunities are both that. The seven habits, the new dual credit opportunities. Threats, we looked at, you know, last year was a very trying year with the political battles going on over retirement. I think it had a lot of stress last year. Social media is always a threat when you're trying to tell your own story and not through other people's eyes. And socioeconomic barriers and just competition with outside obstacles. And in terms of weaknesses, you know, we're still looking at the fact that there seems to be a lack of community understanding about all these offerings. So we're really, one of our goals is to tell our story better, make sure that everyone knows everything that we have to offer our students. Our 30-60-90 Plan, like I've already mentioned, we came together for our, we did the DISC assessment, which was the personality. We've done the seven habits. And we just, you know, tried to really put a focus on self-growth, both for students and staff. But we feel like that's where it's at. If you don't grow personally, you're not going to grow professionally. So that's something that we're really trying to do. And of course, in the 60 days, we're looking at how we can take that to our PLCs, small groups, student surveys. And we were trying to conduct one of those each year with our leadership program. And then based off of that data, we're going to move forward into our 90-day plan. Any questions?
Item 7D, Mr. Cochran.
I'm asking the board to approve the memorandum agreement with Big Sandy Community Technical College for dual credit courses for our high school students.
Thank you. Is there a motion to do so? Is there a second? Motion's been made, second. Any discussions? Bill Pena will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 7C, Mr. Whitaker.
I ask the board to approve the Step 2G contract for server maintenance, and it's going to cover the core router, which provides connectivity.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 7D, Ms. Cantrell.
We are just adding in for the board's approval to allow wall breaks to come on site for the schools to give immunizations to our staff.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 7E, Ms. Halsley.
We are asking the board to approve a clockwork line screen that would reduce to upgrade our playground.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 7F, Mr. Jeff Cochran.
By law, every year before August 31st, we have to inform you about our data security and breach procedures pursuant to 702 KAR1-170. Just basically to let you know that we have security in place for any data breaches or any security issues that we have. Nothing's 100% effective, I guess, but we do have things in place just in case anything happens. Just to let you all know that we have those in place by law.
All right, thank you for the notification. And as time goes on, it's getting to be a much more sensitive and more timely concern. Just takes a lot of attention, and I appreciate everything you all have done thus far. Ms. Cant.
And yes, for every federal program that we have and every state program we have, we have to assure that we will spend all the money in accordance to the guidelines that are set out with each one of those particular programs. So by you approving the assurances tonight, it would give KDD the freedom to begin releasing that money to us on a quarterly basis.
Still moving.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Yes, you can see tonight that we have four of our Family Resource and Resource Center Directors here.
Is that Karen back there?
That's Karen back there. Yes, we had her on standby for the family coming in, wanting to see Belinda. We had to keep that secret. So, but, you know, I cannot express to you how proud I am of all seven of our Family Resource Center Directors. Not all of them are going to be here today, but they all do such a fabulous job. And one of the things that they are continuously doing is seeking new funds for us and for the schools and for the children. So tonight, we're asking your approval for the ASAP grants, and these grants will be for drug education across the system. Each one of these ladies will write that grant and hopefully receive it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Motion's been made, second. Any discussion? If not, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, Mr. Yance.
This year, we're working to expand our virtual offerings in Johnson County schools, targeting specifically some students who have been placed on homeschool in the past by their parents, chose to educate them outside the school district. We're able to draw those students back by offering a curriculum fully online for them that they can take that is comparable to the curriculum in Johnson County schools. We've been very successful in that so far. We're about 50 in right now, students that have signed up for the program. So that's going to be some seed money we're going to be able to recoup this year that we've not had in the past. What we're asking for tonight is approval to participate in a grant program that Acelis uses. Acelis is the program that we're using online for our online curriculum. Very good curriculum, it's been looked at by a lot of our teachers, and it's doing a good job. What this grant program does, it allows us to buy devices from that company. Those devices are locked specifically to that program, so it's the only thing the students can use that program for. And they're actually, on the grant, is they're about $100 less than what we're paying for Chromebooks currently. So it allows us to keep up our one-to-one with those virtual students. And we ask for approval to participate in those grants that will be offered by Acelis Corporation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Yance. Mr. Cochran.
We are asking the board to approve Golden Eagle Discount Card for athletic event admission. This would allow all the papers, age between five or older, to receive a discount card, and that would enable the student admission for entrance to athletic events for all men and women.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Mr. Pierce.
Yeah, we're asking the board to approve our annual Black Gapville New Year's Fall Festival for November 3rd that we'll be having out at school for fundraising.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the request? Second? Motion's been made, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Mr. Crum.
I am not sure which one is in front of you.
Which one is it?
Oh, the pointy joy. Ah, good, yeah. They're just going to do their annual, they always do their fall and winter dance recitals at the high school gym.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. For student trips, Mr. Crum.
The choir is planning their trip. Once every four years, she tries to take the.
Once every four years, she tries to take the choir to Nashville so they can actually record an album. And so it's been four years, this will be her follow-up trip.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Crum. Mr. Cochran.
For several years, Johnson High School had a JAG program, so jobs that take graduates and students who are at risk to be given opportunities to learn how to prepare for jobs in career after-high school. We do all approve bringing that grant back last probably October at Johnson High School. We now can get an opportunity to expand that to the regional level. I mean, it's a wonderful opportunity, and I need to also approve to go to MOU with JAG.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? No, we made it. Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item O?
Mr. Murchitt from this fair. You guys have seen already some slight adjustments to the salary schedule that we need for you to approve tonight. But one of those that we want to make mention of is our mentoring program, and it's going to provide a mentoring stipend for some high-quality teachers to be working with our new educators, to bring in more professional opportunities, helping them out, making them become stronger teachers. So we'd like for you to approve that as well as the other side changes.
Keep mom and daddy is gone, so we want to make sure that we can use and train the teachers and let them start with the side of the list.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Motion's made in second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 7D?
Yes, we found out we have a lot of students that are the elementary age that are very interested in cross-country. And so we actually have a teacher that came to us wanting to volunteer to become a cross-country coach for elementary. So we would hope that you would approve that, so we can have more students involved in a sport such as that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Cochran.
We're asking you to approve the memorandum agreement with Patrick Community Technical College that while I study teaching and observation hours by their students.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Crum.
These are just our fall sports schedules that we will ask you all to approve.
Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion on that? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, you have the superintendent's personnel report, no action. There'd be nothing else, got to get a motion to adjourn. Motion's made in second. All in favor, say aye. Now, thank you all for coming out tonight. And next month, when we meet, it's going to be very exciting. We're going to be at Porter School. I invite each and every one of you to visit us at Porter School for the next board meeting. Thank you.